Afternoon. Welcome to a joint work session between the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners and the Squawley Tribal Council. My name is Ty Mensah. I'm Chair of the Board of Thurston County Commissioners. It is Wednesday, March 31st, 2021. At 3:00 PM sharp, we do, based on the requirements for our Commissioner meetings, have to be live streamed and recorded, just so that's up front. There's a Thurston County YouTube channel where public can follow along, and that's based on Open Public Meetings Act requirements and the pandemic modifications of that. So we've been operating under that for quite a while. There's also a conference call, option 3602529020, pin 1234. That's to provide public access to all County Commissioner meetings where a quorum of the Board is present. There's only three of us. So we really welcome, are very thrilled to have the Nisqually Tribal Council meet with today, get to know a little better, and discuss any issues of mutual concern. I thought we could just start, since I don't think we've had one of these meetings since I've been on the Board these last couple of years. And I do know some of you, just from the community and different events, but it might make sense to have kind of introductions and have each Commissioner and Tribal Council member give a brief introduction, so we kind of know who's at the table, the virtual table. So instead of me going around naming county folks, I'll just, I guess I'll just start and pass it to Commissioners, then we'll pass it off to our tribal members today. So again, my name is Ty Mensah. I represent District 3. That's the western third of Thurston County. Right in the middle of my first term in office, and and I'm the Chair of the Board this year, for the first time. And I will pass it to the Vice Chair of the Board, Commissioner Edwards.
I guess I'll just take just a short minute to compliment the Chair. I kind of thought you would do maybe what we're doing at our meetings when we kick off. Your recognition of tribal, no, this isn't the place?
Commissioner Edwards, we have, we've started incorporating a land acknowledgement component to our formal Board meetings on Tuesday. Hopefully that's something that is well received, and I certainly would want to hear if not, but that's what he's referring to.
I think, Ty, maybe when we get to our introductions, maybe our Vice Chairwoman Squawley here could do a prayer, opening prayer for our meeting also in our language.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna keep this real short. Gary Edwards, I'm the old guy around here, been around for quite a while. Did a lot of years as your local sheriff. And I'm really looking forward to this new project the tribe is coming up with on promoting the cell service, I guess is the best way that I could put it for everybody out in rural America. Looking forward to hearing more about that and supporting that concept with what I've heard so far. Thanks.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mahia.
Hello again. It's so good to see all of you again. My name is Carolyn Mahia, and I'm the Commissioner for District 1. Thank you so much for coming today. I'm so excited.
County Manager, Thurston County Manager.
Good afternoon. Ramiro Chavez, I am the County Manager. And I help the Board on anything they want me to do for the most part. And also, I'm very thrilled to having been able to have a joint meeting with you, as I believe that it's an important part of the business, not just the business of the county, but as a community, to have a good, great working relationship with our Tribal Council. So I really appreciate you taking the time this afternoon and look forward to continuing having those meetings in the future.
Go ahead, Rob.
Good afternoon. I'm Robin Campbell. I'm the Assistant County Manager. I just want to echo what everyone has said, so excited to be able to join you today, even though it is online instead of in person, and looking forward to continuing a wonderful working relationship with the tribe.
We'll pass the baton.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Chairman Cho, president of Squawley Unit Tribe. Glad to be here today. I did kind of send that message out that I thought I wasn't gonna be, I was gonna be unavailable for today in light of, you know, the loss of a family member, what I've actually suffered here in the last two months here. First with my mother, and now my nephew. But taking the time today and understanding the importance of kind of what Commissioner Edwards, Vice Chair Edwards stated, you know, it's been a long time coming with, meeting with the Commissioners of Thurston County and that long-lasting, you know, relationship we have, you know, seeing how we're right in Thurston County, of course, and, you know, me and Gary, me and Gary Edwards had some time back in the day. I was a Fish and Wildlife Officer, and of course, he was sheriff, and, you know, he did, he did make the mistake of calling me Brian McLeod, but that's all right. I'm gonna go ahead and pass this baton on to our Vice Chair, who is going to grace us with an opening prayer before we continue on with the introduction.
Okay. I started too. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Antoinette Squawley. I'm the Vice Chair. My Indian name is Ask Albaliza. And thank you all for joining us. It's actually nice to see everybody's face again. We really, this is the only way we get to see people, so it is really nice to see you guys, even though it's on the screen. Thanks for meeting with us today.
Go ahead, Dave.
My name is David Ile. I'm the Treasurer for the Tribe. I also sit on the Thurston Conservation District as well, so I'm a county official as well. I'm really looking forward to this meeting here. You know, the Tribe, my background is community development, and we have a lot going on out here at the Tribe and reaching out into the county as well. We've got a lot of, a lot of projects going on. I hope to update you on it today and get your input and see how we can all move together, move forward together.
Good afternoon, everybody. Willie Frank III. My Indian name is Kalashkid, and that was given to me by my grandfather Willie Frank Senior, who lived to be 104. I'm honored to really just sit down with you folks today. I mean, this is long overdue to have everybody all in one spot talking, building that relationship. I think it's very important for the Nisqually Tribe and Thurston County to strengthen this relationship. You know, we aren't going anywhere. You guys aren't going anywhere. So I think it's time to figure out how we, how we work together more, and, you know, I see it being a very positive for both sides. So I'm honored to be here today. I'm Seventh Councilman, and yeah, looking forward to the discussion.
Hi, I'm Nate Kushman with the Tribal Attorney's Office.
And that's, that's everybody on our end who's here.
All right. Chairman Mensah, if you want to go ahead and get us started.
Sure. So we, another legal requirement we have is to post an agenda, a certain number of hours in advance of any meeting. And this is an open, we did not put anything special on the agenda because we wanted it to be an open forum. We wanted to address any issues. Dave mentioned the overview of projects, and that would be fantastic to hear. We got a little bit of a taste of what's going on with the broadband project. I've heard, I've heard of things that interested me to hear more about with respect to economic development projects and the Squawley jail and different things. I also work, I work with David Trout and Chris Ellings on salmon recovery issues as a member of the Salmon Recovery Council. So I'm always interested in things related to ecosystem restoration and salmon recovery. I know you guys are big, big players there. I sure appreciate that. So I guess I just open it up for a topic from any quarter.
I think Treasurer, or Chairman Cho, I know Treasurer Ile had a few items also.
Sure, I can, I can start this off. You know, I just wanted to touch on a few projects, and I think Chairman can touch on the broadband later. But just a few that I want to get out there for open discussion. First of all, the Tribe, what we're working on at Nisqually itself on our reservation right now. We're finishing up an actually a 50,000 square foot health clinic center, which should be opening up here in June. Our goal with this is to get better services for our tribal members, but also open up to our employees. So a lot of, you know, county citizens will be able to come and use our facility. With that, we are opening up also an elder center shortly. As soon as we're done with construction on our health clinic, the elder center will be right behind it, and that's going to be another 20,000 square foot building. Elder's functions are mostly luncheons. We bring in elders from the community as well as elders from other tribes, and they have luncheons, get togethers, they do a lot of projects. So, you know, as an elder, you can go there and work on beading projects or weaving, things like that, and lunch is a big part of that, too. That's all, both those projects are right in the middle of our new housing development. So our new community is right on our reservation. We're opening up. We've got, I guess so far, we've got eight single-family homes as well as a 20-unit apartment complex. With that, we're gonna add at least 40-some new single-family units, homes-wise. So the, you know, living facility as well as health is right there. Everything's all within walking distance. And we're trying to make this easy for our elders to get around, get services, things of that nature. That's just on our reservation. Another project we're kind of working on involves Fort Lewis, JBLM. We're trying to work on a land swap with them, where if you've been through the reservation, you've seen all the power lines that go right down the middle of our reservation. They used to go all the way across, and, you know, back in the day, we'd sell fireworks underneath our power lines. Half, that got moved halfway out of our way about 20 years ago. We're hoping to remove the rest of it here in the next couple of years anyways. Working with JBLM on that, JBLM has said that they would accept moving the power lines onto their land to bypass the reservation and get it further down by the Spooner's Farm there on Yelm Highway, and eventually cut across and back to where the lines are currently. With that, we're hoping that we can swap a piece of land with Fort Lewis, which would give us about 110 acres on the other side of 510 from our current reservation. So it would free up about 250 acres for us possibly for property right along 510, which would really help us out economically. We could put businesses up there, housing, whatever. Just a little ways down from our reservation is Lake St. Clair. We just bought some property there. It's also under the power lines currently, but eventually, once we get those moved, the power lines will be moved out of there as well. That would give us about 100 acres right there on Lake St. Clair. We're open for that. It's mostly our future. As we build houses up on our current reservation, hopefully sometime down the road, we can start developing that for housing, whatever else the Tribe has going on at that time. Currently, we're starting a horse program there. The horse program is kind of set up to help our Behavioral Health Department, help out people who are just in need of healing mentally. You know, we have a lot of historical trauma at the Tribe, and we're trying to help those, those folks out as best we can. And, you know, this is something we kind of thought of as being the Squawley Tribe, where the people of the river and the people of the grass. And as part of the grass, we also, we also used to own horses at one time. So we're hoping getting back to this horse program can bring some happiness back to our people in, in that way. The next project, a little further down the road by Cabela's. We used to be partners with the WIG Development Company out of up by Seattle. Anyways, we've, we've gotten rid of that partnership, and we've purchased all that property. So now, right now, we are the sole owners of that 250 acres by Cabela's. And again, we're hoping in the future here to get, working, working on a development plan. Currently, we're just starting to go through that process, maybe finding somebody to help us with a plan for that property. So that's another big goal of ours, is to get that property going. Those are the projects that I had in mind to talk about right now. And I know you guys also mentioned broadband. Maybe our Chairman has something to say on the broadband. I'm not sure.
Thank you, Treasurer Ile. Kind of a tough act to follow there, but, you know, you know, he speaks about the broadband that we've created here in Nisqually, and that all stemmed from the Emergency Management Division, which prior to my appointment as Chairman for the Tribe, I was the emergency man, well, I am the Emergency Management Director for the Nisqually Unit Tribe. And that all started with what kind of Vice Chair Edwards stated, you know, the communications tower. We do have a communications tower on the reservation located right next to our Emergency Operations Center that, you know, it does kind of link our communications, which, you know, a number of us know that we, we suffer, especially in that general area. And the history behind that, of course, stemmed from JBLM and all the federal regulations. And that's one of the things we developed with past leadership is, you know, that clear line that we've established our license, licensed through the FCC to get this communications tower. And we're actually looking at, you know, a development of another one that will also broaden those horizons for not only the Tribe, but our surrounding partners, which would include, of course, Thurston County. You know, when he was Sheriff, Edwards, he's, he's well aware of the communication issues we had on the reservation in certain areas. And that's kind of what we, we've developed here on the reservation with this communications tower. Just recently, we broadened that horizon with the fiber optics on the reservation, which now provides, you know, internet service for our members on the reservation. And I think that's what Chairman Mensah was kind of speaking in sense of is how can we work that into not only the Tribe, but our surrounding partners, including Thurston County. The Squawley Communications, you know, they've done a phenomenal job. They've completed this project in a really good time in light of this pandemic that we've been going through here in 2020. And, you know, they're gonna continue those efforts, not only with the Thurston County, but, you know, there's another tribe that has reached out in, you know, seeing if we can't assist them in that, that sense because they've, they've kind of witnessed of what, what's been taking place here in Nisqually. So a lot of these projects we're talking about, of course, they're gonna include Thurston County because we are neighbors, and we've always been neighbors. You know, past history will show that. I myself, I've been on the reservation for over 27, almost 30 years, you know. There's been good relationships with Thurston County. There's been bad relationships. And, you know, it's, it's time to change that factor and start working together because that's what it's all about, is pulling us all together. So with that, I'm, I would like to turn this over to maybe Vice Chair Squawley or Councilman Frank, if you would like to speak a little bit about, you know, what, what we're experiencing with our fisheries program and whatnot.
Yeah, definitely. You know, I don't know how, how much info you guys know about the I-5 Bridge project that we're working on with Pierce County, Thurston County, JBLM. I mean, there's, there's a whole group. We actually had County Commissioner, or not County Commissioner, County Administrator Bruce Danmeyer down yesterday to show him what the, the effects are having on the, on the, on the Nisqually River as well as the I-5 Bridge that goes over the river. You know, the change in the river in the last 20 years is, is huge. Just to see the, the way that the river has shifted, and to see the, the shoreline is, is, it's yeah, I mean, it's, it's collapsing in front of our eyes. You know, and I don't think we're even, you know, gonna make another five years without some kind of disaster there right at I-5. Not necessarily right on the bridge, but right next to the bridge. You got the Billy Frank Jr. Wildlife Refuge. And then on the other side of the freeway, you got where the Wahilut Indian School is. And the shoreline right there is falling in, in the river. It seems like every other week when I go down there and see it, the shoreline gets less and less. You know, so we're, we're working on, with a core group of folks trying to advocate for funding for this project. And we are fortunate enough to have Congresswoman Strickland out here on Friday at Nisqually, and that's one of the, the big things we're gonna show her as well. You know, growing up and, and growing up at Frank's Landing and living in the valley, you know, I think everybody remembers the flood of 96. Gary, I'm sure you remember how massive that flood was. And to see the way that the river is changing right now in front of our eyes. You know, I don't think people realize if we get another high water or massive flood, it's, it may wipe out I-5. And I know everybody remembers in 2017 when the train derailment happened. I mean, that, that literally shut the freeway down. So, you know, we're hoping to, you know, to continue advocating for this funding. We have some requests in at the state level. And of course, we're gonna push hard at the federal level as well on this project. And I'd love to have you guys down, you know, sometime and show you guys the, what we're talking about there. You know, I, we can always talk about it and show you pictures, but when you actually visualize to see how the river's changed, yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty amazing to see.
I'm still waiting for my, sorry, Chair Mensah. I was just gonna say, I'm still waiting for my canoe trip that I was promised.
Oh, yeah. No, no. Hey, so you gotta wait for it to get warmer. I definitely would love to take all you guys down and show you guys on the boat because, you know, it is definitely something, you know, you guys should, should see and
They wake up the canoes next month. It starts in April, so.
Yeah.
If you want to go now, it might be a little cold. You might want to wait for a little later time in the year. They'll be doing the canoe awakenings here pretty soon.
We took, we took Representative Fay down there back in November, and I requested to our lobbyist, Davor Jurassic, that we do not schedule any more November boat rides. That we, we shoot for the spring and the summertime. You know, it's, it's not, not as warm in November, so. But yeah, no, I definitely think, you know, it'd be great to have you guys down there. You know, and of course, we're also right now in the middle of our North of Falcon discussion with the State of Washington and our Tribes in regards to our upcoming fishing seasons. I think everybody knows that our fish are dying right in front of our eyes as well. Our runs are not coming back to here in Nisqually the way they used to, and as well as other watersheds. This will be the third year in a row that the Nisqually Tribe has not fished our chum salmon. So, you know, we, this is always a tough process every year to, it's almost like we're fighting over the last fish, really. You know, so it's, you know, it's tough, tough for us here in the Squawley because, of course, that's, you know, our way of life and who we are. When, when our nets are in the water, you know, it's, it's really good medicine for all of us, you know. And, you know, we've, we've come to the point to tell our fishermen, it doesn't matter if you catch one or 100 fish, as long as your nets are in the water when we're open, to make sure that we're still exercising that treaty right and educating people about who the Nisqually Tribe is. And I could talk a little bit, one more, just about some of the work we've been doing with the local high schools. So we have a land acknowledgement agreement with all of the North Thurston High Schools, and that's, I believe, 22 or 23 schools. We actually have a land acknowledgement to where they, every morning, they acknowledge the Nisqually Tribe. They also have a Nisqually flag hanging at every school in the district. You know, that's, that's pretty amazing for us here in the Squawley. I graduated from North Thurston in 2000. To think 20, 20 years later that we have a Nisqually flag hanging, and we have a relationship with the school is huge for us. We're working with the Young School Districts as well to hopefully be able to, to do the same thing and really just try to educate people, you know, who we are as the Squawley people and, you know, our culture, our fishing, our treaty rights, and really our way of life. You know, we really want to try to educate people about the Nisqually Tribe, not just, you know, everybody sees the casinos, the smoke shops, the gas stations. You know, we don't, we don't want these kids, and we don't want that next generation thinking that's who the Nisqually Tribe is. You know, we want to make sure that we're, we're educating people about why we fish, why we fish the way we do, and, you know, the way we exercise and practice our culture also.
It's the absolute recognition of our ancestors and the work that they did. And the language that they spoke here at Nisqually is, it was a little bit of frustration, you know, when I first started teaching the language here, many, many job offers in all the school districts. But, you know, my intent, when I came home to teach language, was to teach teachers so that they could go into the school districts. And they've, the girls that have been taught the language here and the Squawley have had many job offers, and it'll continue to grow on. Now my niece is creating curriculum, creating development, creating an app and a website for Nisqually's tribal language program so that we can share that with Thurston County School District, with the Young School District, Wahilut School District, like the other tribes have on the table already. So that's kind of what we've been working on with the language program, teaching them all the alphabets, all the sounds. David was one of my students. He was a prior student.
It's tough. It's tough.
It is a bit of a challenge, you know, for, for a language, you know, to learn all 42 letter sounds and then write sentences, study the dictionary. It was intense. And, you know, it, it became a challenge for some of the students, but it was much appreciated, very, very heartfelt from all the students. And that's what we, you know, we want to do is get it into the school districts. But that is the ancestral language. They call it first people's language. So it was here before, you know, the language, the English language was spoken. So, thank you.
Very cool.
I know we just threw a lot at you guys. Do you guys have any questions on anything specific you'd like us to go into more detail with?
Yeah, let's just go around and ask questions on the things that you just went through. I had a couple, a couple things caught my attention, but I'll go with Commissioner Mahia. Do you have anything?
I don't have any questions at, at this time. I think these are some of the topics we discussed when I met with you all. And I, I'm pretty sure I asked my full questions at that time, but I'm interested to see what the other Commissioners, whether train thought is, is going with this.
Commissioner Edwards, anything on that?
Yes. I guess
Uh, yes. I guess, uh, I'd like to make sure that we continue this coordination on our covert removal program, uh, for salmon enhancement. And I'm hoping that our folks from Public Works that are coordinating these activities are coordinating with your folks to make sure that every covert we replace is a beneficial covert to your situation. I mean, we have to prioritize all of them obviously, but we want your input to make sure we're getting it right. So if we're missing some little thing, uh, that you think is something substantial, uh, but, you know, it's not a major thoroughfare, well, I don't think we care about that. It's about the fish and it's about creating that, uh, upstream environment for them, uh, when it comes to spawning and such. So I wanna make sure that we're not missing the boat, so to speak, on anything. And when it comes to language, I, I haven't even mastered the English language. I want you folks to know that. So anyway, I'll see if I can't pick up a phrase or two, but, uh, don't hold your breath because you might turn blue. Okay, that'll be my little bit for right now, but I'm enjoying this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Remember Frank, I had a question about, you referenced, uh, North of Falcon discussions, and that came up several times at the Salmon Recovery Council meeting last week. And I, I wasn't able to, everybody in the room seemed to know what it meant except me. So if you could elaborate on what's going on, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. So I, I can't, I don't know the origin of the name. I've been wondering the same. Like, I'm like, how did you come up with North of Falcon? So, so every year, of course, you know, uh, after the bolt decision in nineteen seventy-four, it created co-management between the state and the tribes. So this is, this has been the process, and I believe it was started around eighty-five. Uh, Bill Wilkerson and, and my dad actually were, were some of the first two to bring that relationship of co-management together. And so we go into this process every year with the State of Washington, uh, Nisqually and all of our other, uh, twenty tribes that, um, work with the Northwest Indian Fish Commission. And we go over our salmon forecasts, uh, with the state and the tribes and, um, try to find the balance on, uh, making sure that we are preserving our, our salmon and, uh, still giving folks both on the state and the tribal side the opportunity to, to fish and have a fishing season. And, and it, it, it's a tough process, you know? We still get the, uh, a lot of people are still under the impression that the tribes are catching all the fish, you know? So it's always important. That's why I always go back to educating. You know, it's important to make sure we are educating folks in the State of Washington. Um, and we, and we know, I mean, there, there's always folks who, uh, don't, doesn't matter what we say or, or provide the, uh, proper information or science behind things. They're not gonna support the tribes regardless, you know? So, so you have that, you have that group of folks out there who still think that, that tribes are the ones catching every fish. You know, it's, it's tough, but I, it gives me hope that, um, in two thousand eighteen, a lot of, uh, sports fishermen were ready to, to sit at the table with the tribes and have this discussion. And one of the things that actually was created out of that was the Billy Frank Junior Salmon Coalition. And you have a, a mixture of, uh, state representatives, tribal leaders, um, city folks, uh, all, all kinds of sports fishermen, uh, commercial fishermen. It's a, it's a, a wide, uh, group of folks on this, on this, uh, coalition to help figure out what are we gonna do and what can we do to make sure that, you know, the salmon are, are being saved in the State of Washington. So maybe, uh, I could invite you guys to the next coalition meeting. Um, I'll give a date and at least just throw it out there and see if any of you guys are available. So you could, uh, you could join us and listen and, and see if it would be something you, one of you guys would wanna take part in also.
I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. A little story. Um, we, uh, have, you know, we, we are working on a habitat conservation plan regarding endangered species in Thurston County, pocket gopher most notoriously. Um, and the Washington, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife was doing some online meetings of their conservation committee, I forget what they're called, reviewing the pocket gopher, um, issue. And twice, there was a meeting and prior to the meeting that I was tuning in for was a meeting about gillnetting on the Columbia River. And in both cases, they were just so delayed, so deluged with public comment that I sat through on two separate occasions, like two hours worth of public comment on that, this gillnetting issue, which I really knew nothing about. But after four hours of listening to people, I started to kind of get it. And it was what, it was what you were talking about, just a very diverse array of, of interest, the, the commercial fishermen, the tribal fishermen, the sport fishermen, and everybody was, you know, kind of had a different slant on this issue, I guess, that's been very controversial in the Columbia River. But I, I guess I'm, I'm sharing my understanding of how those coalitions, you know, they're difficult to come together, but there are a lot of overlapping interests when we all wanna see fish return to the river. So, um, I think they're very useful.
We'll definitely make sure we get you guys an invite for the next one then. And I, I know Nate had, had something he wanted to say real quick also.
Just out of that, so I, I too wondered where the North of Falcon name came from. And it refers to Cape Falcon down on the southern Oregon coast. And it, the process that sets the fisheries between the Canadian border and that plate. So north, everything north of Cape Falcon.
Canada. Okay.
If they have any comments or whatever, you can send it to me. Okay?
So, so Chairman, you know, kind of touched base on the North Falcon concept. You know, it was kind of developed back in nineteen eighty-five as Councilman Frank expressed. You know, it was a coalition established not only by his father, but our, our DNR, uh, our actually fisheries manager, uh, Georgina Kautz. Um, may she rest in peace. Uh, right now, we do have an individual that, that is kind of stepping into that, a former councilman, uh, Commissioner Edwards, you may know him, James Slate Junior, uh, another former fish and wildlife officer. He's actually kind of stepped into that realm and, you know, he's going into his third year. So, you know, that clear understanding about the fish and what we've missed out in these, these few, last few years. I know that Governor Inslee really touches base on what we can do to improve that. And, you know, that coalition of North and Falcon involves the number of tribes as well as some of the state entities to kind of collaborate a, a plan that initially works. So we do have that salmon. Um, currently on the, in the tribe, we're in the process of remodeling our, our old, you know, our original fish hatchery, the, uh, Kalama Creek Hatchery through some funding that we received through the federal government and, you know, beefing that up a little bit to kind of, you know, accommodate getting some more fish out into our streams and rivers and out into the sound. But until we actually come to the table with North Falcon and, you know, get a good solid plan in place, that's, that's when we're gonna see the improvement, I believe. And I don't know if Councilman Frank agrees with that, but, uh, yeah, that, that's always been a, a venture of mine because I've also worked at the, the newest hatchery, the Clear Creek Hatchery, which is located there on JBLM. You know, I was a part of that, uh, facility for about four to five years and, you know, watched all the process of, you know, bringing the salmon in, getting them spawned. And then of course, you know, raising them to release them back into the Cur- Clear Creek, um, into the Nisqually River. So, you know, I, I've always been a part of that venture. And I'm, I'm glad that Commissioner Edwards touched base on the covert matter because that's always been a passion of Willie's and, you know, he's, he's been, he's, he's one of our senior councilmen, if you, if you would. He's.
And I'm the youngest one, Chairman. I, I don't know how I'm a senior councilman, but, no, I think you're right, Chairman, because, you know, uh, a lot of folks don't understand the process of North of Falcon and, you know, of course, tribal and non-tribal because a lot of the, the decisions we make isn't, it's out of our hands. It's at the federal level with NOAA, um, and the folks in Washington DC because we're, we're fishing, you know, unfortunately, a lot of our, our salmon are listed under the Endangered Species Act. You know, so of course, we have two hatcheries on the Nisqually and we're always pumping out fish. And it's, you know, folks don't understand, it's not just for the Nisqually Tribe, it's for the whole state of Washington, you know? And, and we, what we do on the river, as Chairman said, we have two hatcheries, Kalama and Clear Creek. You know, I honestly believe that if it wasn't for not just our tribe, but our other tribes, you know, we may not have any, any, uh, salmon in the river, any, in the river or the sound anymore, you know? And so we're always trying to work with the state also to make sure that, you know, they understand if they need help with the state hatcheries, they need to reach out to the tribes. You know, we've worked with, uh, with the state, of course, on, on making sure that we're helping their hatcheries in Mitter Creek and, and the different hatcheries that they have throughout the sound also, you know? And, and I think it's really time for folks to come to the table and, you know, think about what is, what are we doing here? What's the best option? Are we gonna continue fishing on a species that's already dying? Or are we gonna actually, uh, you know, roll up our sleeves and, and move out of the status quo, I guess? You know, so it, it'll definitely be tough coming forward, but I'm, I'm hopeful and think that we can, we can, uh, bring our salmon back.
You know, uh, let me jump in on that, beans, uh, you're, you're commenting on that. I don't know exactly where everybody is, but you know, they've got that Christmas tree program where the, down in the flats, they throw the Christmas tree in for herring spawning.
Yeah.
And that creates food for the salmon. And, uh, you know, Lorraine writes a, uh, article for Northwest Fisheries quite a bit. I've been thinking about talking to her about this topic, but, uh, I don't know how many of you heard me talk about this in the past, but we've got, uh, the timber industry, you know, that is putting millions of tons of chemicals throughout the cascade range. So it isn't just any one entity. And my concern is now, uh, when I worked for Warehouser more than fifty years ago, we were putting tons of fertilizer on then with helicopters. And, uh, they try to do their best, you know, as far as making sure it isn't raining too hard and all that. But we've had a couple presentations and I'm not convinced that, that high nitrogen content isn't very detrimental to salmon and wildlife in general. You know, there's speculation that it affects the hoof rot with elk. And, uh, then we've got a shortage of grouse in those areas that, where there's applications made. And for me, it's real easy to see how a grouse could pick up a little pebble that looks like a piece of quartz that it'd normally be for its gizzard happens to be one of these little, uh, chemical balls, if you will, of, the only way I can really explain it. They're like a small quartz stone with that, they would eat for their gizzard. Then we don't have any gizzard or any, uh, uh, grouse in the area. So we've been looking at that a little bit, but I've talked to some of the NOAA scientists in the Puget Sound, and they weren't even aware this was going on, as most citizens really are not aware. And ecology issues are licensed every year. And this continues and continues kind of under the radar. But I believe, uh, what the NOAA scientists told me was that it was so detrimental to the microorganism food chain, then then right up, right up the ladder, if you will, it affects that food chain for the rest of the salmon and all other fishery components until it gets to that bigger food chain that the salmon need, like those small herring and that type of thing. So I'd sure like to get with you guys and spend maybe a little more time. I know we don't have time now, but, uh, kind of, that's my pet peeve when, on in water quality, environmental issues and such. Uh, I've done a lot of reading, got a lot of background on it. Sure like to visit with you folks if you ever wanna spend some time talking salmon.
Yeah, def- definitely, Gary. You know, I, just listening to you talk about timber fish and wildlife, I've been, I finally, uh, am able to go through all my dad's old papers in our garage. And I found a, a whole, a whole notebook he was writing on with, and he was with Stu Bledsoe. And they were work, they were working on, they must've been back in the late eighties or early nineties when the, uh, Timber Fish and Wildlife Agreement and everything was, was getting started. So it's been really cool to learn about all that. And, um, yeah, like I'd love to, to set up a meeting and, and figure out a time to, to come out and talk, definitely.
Well, I'll come out and we can go over to the casino or one of the cafe spots or something.
That works for me.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I don't wanna take up all the time, Chair.
Kind of interesting you should bring that up, uh, Commissioner Edwards, because we do have a program within the tribal structure that kind of addresses those matters. You know, we've developed a, I guess what you would call a tree planting crew. And they work not only here down in the valley, from the valley, but they go all the way up to Mount Rainier to kind of reestablish some of that habitat that you're, you're saying we're missing along our watershed. So that is a program that we do have in place and has been going for, shoot, what, ten years, Willie? About ten years.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe a little bit longer even. It's been definitely going on for a while. It's pretty cool.
I, I know they did a real big project up in the O'Hawpe Valley that is directly related to them. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's the, that's the crew I'm talking about right there. And they're only growing right now. And so I'm glad you touched base on that and some of the concerns. And I know that's our DNR manager, Mr. Slate, he's well aware of that because he was part of the, when he was doing his fish and wildlife, he was also working with, uh, State Fish and Wildlife on looking at the elk population issues with the, um, you know, some of the things you described there. So, you know, that's, that's, that's his passion right there is the, all that we're talking about today. So it would have been nice to have him and, and Dave on this call. Maybe the next round, we can get some input from them as well. So.
Well, maybe even before that. I don't know about you guys, but I've had my shot. So I got, I got Johnson and Johnson. So I think we'd be safe to get together and have a coffee or something.
Well, and real, real quick, uh, Mr. Trout and Slate are actually on North of Falcon right now. So after I get off with you folks, I gotta jump back on there as well.
Okay. Well, we look forward to getting together one of these days.
Yeah.
Uh, a couple of county projects I, I was gonna touch on, I thought might be of mutual interest. Um, now I'll let the county manager see if he's got anything to add. But, uh, I've been work, I've personally, the board and, and we personally have been spent a lot of time on our climate, um, uh, action response plan. The whole region engaged in a planning process that took about two years to tip the tail, um, resulting in the Thur- Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, TCMP. The jurisdictions all adopted it, uh, in early twenty twenty-one. And now a phase three ILA, interlocal agreement between the jurisdictions was signed. And, um, I'm representing the county on that steering committee where we're trying to lay out both an implementation strategy and a long-term maintenance, uh, and funding strategy, um, over the next year for basically a phase four, which would be a long-term implementation of a set of seventy-two strategies. Some of them kind of simple and easy to, to implement and other ones are kind of vague and, and, and are gonna take a lot of work to get details worked out. But we've been working hard on that and invite you to take a look at it or, you know, be in any involvement or, or input we'd love to have. Um, so I just wanted to be aware of that. And then a second thing, and I wouldn't have thought of this except it came up this morning, uh, is that a couple of years ago, uh, we went into a, a federal government training on, uh, disaster recovery. If we had a big nine point, nine point oh earthquake, for example, it's just one example, and it really devastated the region, how would we, uh, how would we manage to recover in a, in a sensible or integrated coordinated way? And we had, uh, local jurisdictions, intercity transit and school districts and fire, uh, chiefs and what, and whatnot. And, uh, so we, we, we left that training back in twenty nineteen intending on putting together an, an interlocal agreement to try to create a framework. And with the pandemic in twenty twenty, that all kind of laid dormant for, uh, quite some time. But it, it's been revived and it was just actually, uh, presented to the commissioners this morning. And it's, uh, if we were to sign off on it, it would create a Disaster Recovery Council. And, uh, tribal representatives would be invited to be part of that if they were, um, inclined to, uh, work with us on that. And I just wanted you to be aware of that. We're just, we're just starting to kind of digest it and discuss it, uh, with our, our partner juris- municipal jurisdictions. And if you hadn't heard about it, it'll, I'm sure a draft would be coming your way for consideration in terms of seeing what we're trying to do and how the tribe might be willing to participate. So those are two.
Yeah, definitely, Chairman. You know, that's, that's somewhat of a passion of mine as well. Um, one of the other things that I did, didn't touch base with is we've got a, what they call a La- Lahar warning on the reservation right now that we acquired through federal, federal funding. And we're currently looking at another second location that will assist our Thurston County brothers and sisters, if you would. that will assist our Thurston County brothers and sisters, if you would. Um, that's something that our emergency management, well, director now, while during my absence is currently working on and presenting the council for consideration of. And I know that he's done some extensive outreach with Thurston County as well as the state of Washington. Uh, that facility, of course, located on J B L M, you know, we, we try to stay in touch with our Thurston County partners because they are our neighbors. And of course, J B L M, you've got the, not only the federal aspect, but you've got the state entity as well located right there on J B L M. And so yes, that, that's one thing we've really gotta look at. And I know we just, uh, we, you know, it's, it's tough to say celebration. I was actually working at the hatchery during the Nisqually quake and I was actually the one that kinda had to spearhead what to do next in the event, because we actually had, uh, fish clippers out, out on that, out on the hatchery. They were clipping the fins of the fish that were, you know, we, we got a contracted group out there. So it was my, I guess they delegated me to go check on the individuals that were in these trailers as well as make sure that, you know, they, they had safe accommodations to make it home and check on their families as well. So yes, it's always been a passion of mine, disaster. Uh, I did have the opportunity to get my training through E M I in Washington, D.C. and spent some time over there as well. So definitely looking forward to what you got to present there, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Great. Uh, Ramiro, did you have anything you wanted to?
Yes, yes, sir. Um, uh, first of all, I, I like to probably, um, elaborate a little bit more into the Nisqually I five, uh, bridge. And, uh, in that particular project, uh, uh, and, and from my perspective is just a, a good example of this incredible partnership. And, uh, the county, uh, myself has, have been involved in this project for years. And the history goes that we came from two different perspectives. One, it was the need to increase capacity at the bridge and obviously increase capacity on the I five corridor south of Nisqually River. And also we blend the need of the environmental component and, and how the, this quality of river is just changing course that is affecting the, the, really the slopes of the I five portion of, 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 of the bridge. So in coordination with David Trout, uh, that has been an incredible partnership. And I have to tell you the, uh, the, because of the partnership, we were able to secure funding from the state to at least begin the hydrological study of, of the, of the Nisqually River migration. I believe that studying is, is ready to be completed. And now we're pursuing additional funding to help us go through the environmental study. And that's the next step really. And with the whole corridor, um, I believe this, uh, the, this, this is structure, which I believe eventually is gonna be an elevated structure, uh, and that's just from my engineering background. Is gonna provide an incredible benefit to the ecological aspects of, of the Nisqually Delta as you described, as well as providing the needed capacity that we need to, uh, for commerce in terms of the I five corridor. So I always bring this, uh, this, this particular project as a great example of the, of the, of the partnership that we have with the Nisqually, the Nisqually, uh, tribe. Also, I like to highlight your, your help and the partnership on the water resources, uh, infra, uh, uh, inventory areas. As you know, that was the result of the Hearst decision. They put a lot of pressure on the county as to how we're gonna be able to deal with, uh, exempt wells. And the legislature passed, they, we're gonna be part of the, uh, what we call the Wira areas in the county. And then Nisqually was, was the first one that was approved by ecology. So I really, really appreciate your partnership and, and contributions to that, uh, project. Also related to the broadband, um, before I get to the broadband, one of the larger initiatives, I believe, one of the larger initiatives the county is going through, the Board of County Commissioners passed a resolution declaring racism a crisis in Thurston County. And within that resolution, uh, the board, uh, it was very prescriptive and descriptive as to the steps that we need to take. One of those steps is, 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 I'm working on that informing, uh, uh, racial equity council. That we're gonna be able to bring, uh, representatives from the community as to how they can probably be part of providing policy changes, suggestions to the Board of County Commissioners. So when the time comes, I will reach out to you and, and we will welcome your representation on that because I believe that you bring a lot of value on, on, on that aspect of, of that, uh, that, that effort. So I, I'd just like to put that in, 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 in your radar. Uh, we're not quite there in forming the, this council, but I'm working the dynamics and the logistics. So, uh, please don't be surprised when I reach out to you for, for a membership.
Uh, just listening to you and talk about the bridge, as I, as I mentioned, you know, going through some of my dad's old papers, I found a map that he drew on a, you know, I think it was a napkin or a paper towel. I don't know who he was meeting with. But it literally had the I five, this was 20 years ago. This was 2001. And I found it the other day and it has a drawing of the map of what he would've liked to see. And it was the bridge elevated.
Yeah.
You know, and that was 20 years ago, that plan, you know, and I, and we didn't even talk about it, him and I, you know, growing up, but to, to see his writing just on, and it's everything that we're talking, that you just mentioned. You know, how if it was elevated, how, how much, you know, easier that would be for a lot of things.
Yeah, what a, what a, what a great, uh, really, uh, serendipity moment in my opinion. But, um, also going back to the broadband, um, you know, uh, members of your, of, of, of the Nisqually tribe came and give a presentation to the board. Uh, and, and I can probably speak to the board. It, it created a, a window of opportunity for a partnership. Um, I think you, you, the, the tribe is already a few steps ahead of the county. And as opposed to the county getting, trying to come up with a new program, I think it's gonna be an opportunity to create a partnership uh, with a, with the Nisqually tribe as to how we're gonna be moving forward and provide access to the rural areas of the county in terms of the broadband access. Um, and in fact, uh, as part of the, uh, the, some of the initial, uh, uh, suggestions as to how we're gonna be utilizing some of the, the, uh, the federal money that has been allocated to the county. Uh, the board is considering setting aside some money, uh, to continue with this effort with broadband. So uh, that is gonna be another opportunity to, for partnership with, with, uh, the county. The last item that I'd like to highlight and Commissioner Edwards stated at the beginning, you know, the acknowledgement of the lands, that's a discussion the board had, uh, and the chair commissioner, Mr. make an acknowledgement at the beginning of every Board of County Commissioners meeting. But, uh, behind that, there's also, uh, there were a lot of, uh, good conversation as to how, what else we can do to acknowledge, uh, the, the, the tribes, particularly the, the Nisqually tribe here in Thurston County. And this is more like, more an idea and perhaps a request. If, if this is amicable to you is, uh, I think there is an opportunity to showcase a piece of art uh, here in the, in the Thurston County courthouse. If you have a, uh, something that you'd like to display here. And we'll work on a plaque, we'll work on something that I think is representative, uh, of, of, of the, of, of your culture, what you bring to our community. And also to highlight this incredible partnerships, as you stated, we're gonna be here, we have been here, we're here, and we're gonna be here in, in, in the upcoming years. So I will just throw that idea for your consideration as well.
I, I think that council member, uh, Hanford McLeod and myself, and, um, we've been in discussion about that, you know, about what, and we've worked with, uh, our other commissioner here. And, and I think that, uh, yeah, we've definitely put some thought into it and we're thinking about different, different things to, uh, you know, so, some different artwork that might be good, you know, not just representing, um, you know, I, I guess not one piece of art that just represents Nisqually, but really the whole area. You know, the Medicine Creek Treaty and, um, you know, this of course was our waterway at one point. This was the only way to get places, you know, so we wanna make sure that, you know, when we find something, we'll, you know, we'll send it over to you guys for your guys' opinion on it. But we want it to be very special that you guys can really, you know, show off over there at the county.
Yes, I was going to say, where is Hanford, where is Hanford right now? Because I know that's definitely his, his area of passion and, and one thing that, um, he really mentioned and, and, um, made a point, uh, about having an art, uh, poll here in the county. And uh, so I was like, ah, this is the perfect topic for him right now. Um, so thanks Ramiro for bringing that up.
The, any, any questions on, on some of my ramblings?
Well, I, I think also, I mean, I, I appreciate you acknowledging the Hearst, uh, decision and uh, you know, I was on council in 2000 test, in 2017, when that was an issue and had the opportunity to testify a couple of different times down at the Capitol, um, you know, and, and it was tough at first because we really were the first watershed. You know, we were the first group. And so, uh, we appreciate the county, uh, coming to the table and we were able to, to get it done. And you know, we'll just, uh, you know, continue making sure, uh, we are protecting that water. You know, I think that is gonna be the next battle over the years is gonna be making sure that, uh, then the Squali tribe, Thurston County, Pierce County and all of our other local areas have clean water. I mean, we all know that the growth and development here in, uh, you know, from Tacoma down is just continues to, to grow every day. So we gotta make sure that we're definitely in communication, holding people accountable, making sure they're doing what they, they're supposed to be doing.
Right. I think with a lot of these topics too, you know, uh, definitely another meetings in order coming, uh, fairly soon. Some things that I definitely would like to see on our next agenda, you know, this climate action response plan that Mensor spoke about, you know, I think that's a pretty big one to me. Um, I'm trying to figure out how to get that implemented here in the Squali moving forward. You know, I'd like to see homes with, uh, solar panels on them, the tribe moving from gas vehicles to electric vehicles, things like that. But you know, the, the whole, the whole spectrum, I guess, how do we, how do we get this, uh, implemented here in the Squali? Also getting somebody on the disaster recovery council. I think having somebody from the Squali on that's, uh, pretty important. Uh, we mentioned racism and how you guys are dealing with that, uh, at the county. Yeah, I know it's a tough topic and I'm really appreciative that you guys are taking that on right now. And anything we can do to help with that, you know, definitely we would, we would like to be a part of that as well. And then lastly, uh, the artwork, definitely we're, we're all about that. So, uh, anything we can do to help with, uh, getting a piece of art there at, uh, Thurston County, we'll, we'll do.
And, and you know, real quick, as, as Treasure I L said, I mean, if you know, we've done, we like to get out and speak to whether it's, uh, you know, young kids, middle, middle school kids, high school kids or or offices, businesses. I mean, we, we love being able to come and educate people and you know, cultural sensitivity training, if you guys are ever doing that, you guys need folks to come and speak on that, please do not hesitate to reach out to us.
Yeah, Willie, like we, uh, we did with the teachers for, uh, North Thurston School District, you know, we brought them out to our culture center. We had little, uh, stations set up. They could come around and just see what, uh, the Nisqually tribe was about. And I think we had about five different, uh, sections they could go to and just, uh, kinda see a little bit of who we are.
Seventy-five teachers we had at the culture center from River Ridge High School. Um, I think it was, I think it was 60 teachers and a bunch of administrators. You know, and so, you know, we, once COVID, uh, you know, we continue to move forward. Hopefully more people are getting vaccinated so we can start doing these in-person meetings again because we, uh, for us here in the Squali, we got a lot of things we wanna get accomplished and it's gonna take working with you guys as well to, you know, really provide the, the jobs, the opportunities, not just for the Squali people, but folks of Thurston County. And I also, uh, I also sent, uh, resolution to Commissioner Mahia, Mahia about Billy Frank Junior Day. Um, I sent her the, uh, the proclamation that Pierce County did. I meant to send that to you guys back in March. I apologize. I did not want Pierce to get the jump on this, but that's okay. Um, so it's, you guys got a copy? Please send it out to the, uh, other folks if that's something you may wanna do, you know?
Yes, and I sent that to, uh, Ramiro. So I, Ramiro will share it with the rest of the commissioners. Just wanna make sure.
That's great.
Um, but, um, yeah, I, um, you know, we passed the, the waste of some prices. I was, I read the resolution. And I thought it was pretty significant that we passed, uh, the resolution here in Thurston declaring waste some prices on, uh, your father's birthday. And that to me had also a lot of meaning, um, that it was specifically on that day.
That was awesome. Yeah, I'm really, I'm glad that you guys did that. I hope more counties will see that and piggyback off of that.
We did declare, uh, about a month before that, I, I forgot to mention that the climate issue was a declared emergency. And there was a lot of discussion and debate about, you know, using that word emergency and using those types of mechanisms, but it really, it felt appropriate to me, uh, after hearing a lot of community input, uh, on the issue. So uh, I'm comfortable where the board landed on that. We had a, a long discussion about it, but um, I'm taking the, the responsibility of that seriously in, in the work that I'm doing with the steering committee.
I just, I don't want Pierce County to get ahead of us down here, that's all.
No, yeah.
It's always like, uh, so, so real quick, you know, it's funny, we got a running joke because Dave, I L went to Timberline. I went to North Thurston and Hanford went to Yelm. So we're always at a rivalry about the schools and, uh, and how we get into the schools and, and do that discussion. So.
Hanford's losing.
And we make sure he knows that too, you know, we make sure to give him, give him heck on that.
My son's at Capital, so if you wanna get in there, I'd be happy.
We, it's funny you say that, Ty, cause, uh, yeah, we definitely actually would love to get into Capital High School and um, get over to Tumwater and some of the other ones. So we haven't, we haven't been over to West Olympia yet. So any, any way you can help us, uh, you know, once COVID lifts the restrictions, that'd be great.
Yeah, no. I look forward to getting to the school and seeing the teachers. We're actually, soccer just started. So I think they're, I think my son's playing Timberline tomorrow, I think. And I haven't, he's had two games. I haven't had a chance to see him. And tomorrow I'm gonna get to see my first game.
Nice.
Of my son playing high school sports. I'm pretty excited about that.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Freshman this year.
Hey, Dave, I just wanna point out that, uh, Hanford's got a new competition there helping him out though, cause, uh, Commissioner Mahia was out there plugging for us here the other day, uh, addressing the Yelm High School. I just wanted to point that out to you.
That's good. A- actually, uh, I think the, uh, administrator out there at Yelm used to be one of my coaches at Timberline. So I'm still rooting for Yelm too.
Okay, good. We, we wrap up or is there any?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I think, uh, what are, what are you guys thinking as far as coming back together? I mean, timeframe and you know, every other month maybe or every couple of months, what are you, what are you guys thinking?
If we shoot for every other month and make, and I mean, I, I would love it to actually be a quarterly thing, but it seems like we, we ran into stumbles, uh, with some of these, you know, whether it's City Council Lacy or Shalas Tribe or whatnot, we, I think we should shoot for an ambitious and try to, you know, if we landed at a quarterly meeting that we actually had routinely, that, that would be great.
It sounds good. Let's shoot for maybe next June. We'll get, uh, our secretary to start getting something together and, uh, get with your people.
Maybe we could do a salmon bake picnic.
Hey, now we're talking, Gary. I like that idea. Yeah, you're right. So that'll be June. We'll have nice weather. We can do it outside. That's, that's the, that's the plan, Gary.
Sounds perfect.
I got a text from my assistant saying that the, um, the governor just is gonna, is allowing everyone over 16 to be vaccinated as of April 15th. So I'm hoping by May 1st or so, we're gonna have a vaccinated population.
Good. That'll be good.
Yeah, so that, that's good.
Okay, great. Well, we really appreciate this. I think this has been an excellent, uh, and long overdue meeting and we really appreciate your time and engagement.
Okay, so, so we'll shoot for next meeting for, uh, sometime in June 2021. I believe we already have a couple of items as a follow-up items. And then we'll send an email ahead of time just to see if we have any additional items you'd like to discuss. And hopefully the, the weather cooperates as well as the vaccine cooperates so we can have an in-person meeting. Uh, that will be fantastic.
Nice.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it.